...are here every time we have one. But we normally make the thirty Tuesday every month at seven thirty. We work on a prepared agenda sitting us on the wall in the back of each room. Any citizens who wish to address the council, there's a sign up sheet that you will come forward. I recognize the name of the media, Kay Neen. Kay, you're always going to sit here. And Jay Lawrence, Jay, good to have you here. This is your first time here.
Yes, it is.
Jay is a managing editor for Eden, Greaseville, and Massamish.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And of course, we have Roy Sollers there. Roy is all around Rockland County everywhere. Good day to you all. Item two, implication one partly of Aspen, none of you met this church, definitely follow the pledge of religion, a common prayer, and get to parochial. Good day.
Let's pray. Your Father, we thank you for all of the blessings you sent our way. Thank you for energy, courage, and wisdom to deal with all of the issues we face each day. We thank you for the leaders of the city of Eden, the staff, and the citizens of our city and the surrounding areas. Grant all of us the willingness to listen, consider all options, and remember that we're here to serve the people. We ask your guidance and help as the water quality of the Dan River is evaluated and protected. Father, we thank you for those who have paved the way to today, their sacrifice, their goals, their hard work. Allow us today to model this selfless example for our youth, the leaders of tomorrow, preparing for the great future that is possible for this wonderful land of Eden. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever being and ever to be.
Item four, council, just for the information, item A, Resolution Preservation Division Board of High School Research Team, three suspect captured, please delete that. It's too hard to do. Get everything organized today, so it's a short period of time, but certainly we'll recognize that. And in place of that, we'll have a proclamation for 2014 Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week. First proclamation is 2014 Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week. Whereas multiple sclerosis is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting 2.3 million people worldwide, and each Iowa someone is newly diagnosed. And whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, Great Carolina's chapter reports that in our state, more than 10,000 people are diagnosed with MS, and that the disease generally strikes people at the prime of life between the ages 20 and 50, causes unpredictable effects in which the progression, severity, and specific symptoms cannot be foreseen. And the cause and cure for this often developing disease remains unknown, and whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, Great Carolina's chapter, has been committed for years to world free, uh, committed for years to a world free of multiple sclerosis, heightening public knowledge about and insight to the disease. And whereas since 1946, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force of MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatment, and cure, has invested more than seven or $71 million in groundbreaking research. Whereas punctuation, National Multiple Sclerosis Society fueled the efforts of nearly 325 research projects, globally totalled $40 million annually at best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the United States abroad. Because of this, MS research has never been more hopeful than it is today. And whereas discovering the cause, finding a cure, and preventing future generations from being diagnosed with MS is an important task that all Americans of North Carolina should support. And whereas the city of Eden recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS, a chronic and often devastating disease, and expresses its appreciation and admiration for the dedication to the National Multiple Sclerosis Society. Great Carolina's chapter has shown for the future freedom of MS. Now therefore, our land October by virtue of this document vested in me by the constitution of all this great state of North Carolina to hereby proclaim March 3 through 9, 2014's MS Awareness Week. The second proclamation. A proclamation designated February as Black History Month. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas established by American historian Dr. Carle G. Woods in the original celebration of Black History Week was observed on February 12, 1926. In 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, the week was expanded to a month. And whereas each February, we pause to reflect on the contributions of African-American community to our national and local identity and Black History. Black History Month gives us an opportunity to learn more about this important part of our nation's story. And whereas as we celebrate Black History Month, we recognize the many contributions of African-Americans to our country and recommit to being a nation of opportunity and total diversity, citizen. And therefore, be it proclaimed that our land October senior male of the city of Eden, hereby designated the month of February, be set aside as Black History Month. A proclamation designated people as cancer awareness month. Whereas cancer, the term is for diseases which abnormal cells divide without control and are able to invade other tissues. Cancer is not just one disease, but many diseases. There are more than 100 different types of cancer. And whereas cancer care consists of treatment for cancer symptoms or side effects that affect quality of life. Care given to help patients cope with these symptoms or side effects is called supportive care. And whereas private homes, traditional hospitals, nursing homes, assisted living, and physicians' offices provide care for cancer patients. And whereas cancer patients rely on skills, knowledge, and expertise of skilled professionals who uphold a long tradition of improvement, comfort, and care of cancer patients. And whereas awareness is the first step toward advancing research and improving funding to identify causes and facilitate prevention, early detection, effective treatment, and cure for this disease. And therefore, I would be it proclaimed that our land October senior male of the city of Eden, hereby designated the month of April, to be set aside as cancer awareness month. And the fourth proclamation. Designated February Spay and Neuter Awareness Month. Whereas pets provide companionship to more than 71 million households in the United States. And whereas animal shelters have to put down more than 4 million cats, dogs, and other animals each year, many of them were healthy and adoptable due to a lack of critical resources and public awareness. And whereas this tragic overpopulation of pets costs citizens and taxpayers of this country millions of dollars annually through animal service programs aimed at coping with the millions of homeless animals. And whereas spay and neutering has been shown to dramatically reduce overpopulation of cats and fur cats, proven to be a wise investment to save animals, animal lives, and taxpayer dollars. And whereas Rockland County Humane Society provides opportunity for residents to have their cats, dogs, kittens, and puppies spayed or neutered at a low-cost food, held monthly in an organization, spays or neuters all pets they take in from allowing them to be adopted. And whereas Rockland County Humane Society is funded by donations and volunteers and city of Eden employees. And the youth council is holding a pet supply drive for the unwanted cats, dogs, kittens, puppies, birds, and small mammals currently in care of Rockland County Humane Society. And therefore, be it proclaimed that our land October senior male of the city of Eden, hereby designated this month of February, as set aside as Spay and Neuter Awareness Let's work to show that all members of council, city manager, city attorney, president. Item six, set the meeting agenda. Council need additions or deletions to the agenda? Since you're already here, allow a motion to accept. Allow a motion, set agenda. No motion, is there a second? Need discussion? All those opposed say aye. All those opposed, no. Then agenda is set. Item seven, public hearing. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Mr. Doherty. Public hearing on potential community development block grant application. Mike Doherty, business. Development.
Good evening. The city of Eden, like other nonparticular cities in North Carolina, competes for funding through the community development block grant program. This funding can be used for housing rehabilitation, clearance of location, infrastructure improvements and recreational improvements, or sewer projects and economic development projects. All these various kinds of projects are designed to offer assistance to low and moderate income residents of our community. As the time for application approaches, we are required to hold a public hearing. This is required by the North Carolina Department of Commerce. By including all these various types of projects, we hope to position our community in a most funding possible for it to be the most. There is no action required by the city council beyond the public hearing this evening.
Any questions being made, Mr. Doherty? Anyone who speak in favor? Is anyone who speak in opposition? Since there are none, then our public hearing closes. Is there a motion to accept? Motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those opposed say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Do not have to pay any votes if you would be so determined. Item eight, request petitions for citizens who didn't have anyone to speak. No finish please, departments and commissions. Uh, Ward.
I have an appointment for a new one, Eddie Barker. The appointment for historic preservation commission was December, and that's still a schedule, so it's just only January. Community appearance, A and F, take that, please, on my behalf.
Uh, Ward, three. If I had to. Very re-terrible, it's expired. Okay, Ward, fine. Yes, I'll report a mayor of Dallas, Mike Ward. Okay, Ward, six.
Uh, yeah, Ward, six, replace the law for call on the county affairs, may I, Sylvia Grubbs? And for triple, I'd like to nominate Mike Harris to be appointed in the triple.
That's all.
No, sir, you have one.
What's that?
ETJ appointment.
ETJ. I didn't have one for that.
Mr. Everett was appointed during the middle of last year, Phil, an unexpired term, and I'm sorry, I thought you and I had a conversation about it.
Okay, he doesn't require anybody, so I'm just report Mr. Everett. Is there a motion to accept his appointments?
No motion to accept the appointments.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those opposed say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The points are set. Item ten, new business, consideration of administrative policy, HR, Ms. Gilley.
Good evening, house members. What you have in front of you that I've placed at your seats is HR twenty, it's basically administrative policy that will help the city staff be able to enact the changes to the retiree policy that were amended and enacted last month. This basically just gives retirees notice, um, it allows HR to give the retirees notice when they're approaching their sixth birthday, um, and it also allows the retiree to get notice to the city as well. Um, so our recommendations for you to all to enact this policy in order to make the working of the termination of insurance retirees.
Any questions, Ms. Gilley?
And I have, um, what I've sent out to you all, um, the email and the agenda has just been amended, and you all will see that in your notes. It was, it was by recommendation that the sentence was a little confusing, so that's been corrected. And I would recommend that you enact the amended policy if you have it in front of you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? Motion to accept, approve, the enactment of the HR tour policy. Second. Any discussion? All those opposed say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion passes. Item eleven, reports from staff, Parks and Recreation, and reports to city council, Ms. Park.
Thank you, Mayor, city council, Mayor, city manager, and city attorney. I'm going to give you a brief update of what happened in Parks and Recreation last year. I want to thank Mr. Doherty for asking for this. It's always a pleasure for me to talk about what's happening in Parks and Recreation. But the first thing that I'm going to do is give a big thank you to the staff. I'm going to show you and list the names, but they're the ones that get out there and do the work. I provide a little guidance and a little bit into it. They're the ones that out there and gets out there every day and work for you sometimes 10, 12, 15 hours a day. So I'm very proud of what they do. The first slide that I have is our staff, of course. I've got the names listed here, but I'm going to go over here with the pictures for the folks and all. Yes, the staff consists of myself, Johnny Farmer, the Parks and Recreation Director. It's been a great pleasure for me to be here, to continue to be here. I'll celebrate my ninth year in June, so time flies really, really fast, it really does. The athletic director for the city is Terry Vernon. He's been in the town for his whole life. He worked at the Boys and Girls Club for many years, and about five years ago, we were able to recruit him over here, and he is a tremendous asset to our department. Our next person is Carl Hutton. She's in charge of our senior center program and our special events. We did the same thing with her when we had Faith Carter retired, we kind of recruited her from the YMCA, and she is an official, a great staff member for us, too. The other staff members that we have is Kathy Overby. She's known as Tank in the community, and you see her by any corner of affairs of Parks and Recreation activity. She is the supervisor at Bridge Street Recreation Center, but she also plays a role of supervisor of Freedom Park, and that is her home. And the city manager and I have talked on a number of occasions, when Tank decides to retire, you can't replace a Tank. She puts in hours, day in and day out. I could probably say she probably averages anywhere from 70 to 80 hours every week, and that's probably being known because she's there all the time.
Well, she told me a couple days ago, nobody but her mother called her Tank. We called her Candy.
That's it. That's it.
Nobody knew her first name.
I pick one every now and then, but she, but she is a very, very dedicated holder, like all the employees at our department, but she's out there all the time. Ms. Patricia Skales, who's the assistant recreation center director of Bridge Street. She's also been with the city for a number of years, and she does a great job. She assists Tank with all the programs there. And in the summertime, when Freedom Park is very busy, she kind of runs the Bridge Street Rec Center for us. Our next person is Jeff Moore. He's the director of Mill Avenue Recreation Center. He also serves as our, uh, as our field preparer down at Freedom Park during our summertime. And in our fall, he gets the fields ready for the teams to play on, and comes in on the weekends and helps staff get those fields ready for that. So he is a great asset to us. He's been with the city over 10 years and does a really, really great job. George Gill is the assistant recreation center director for Mill Avenue Gym. He's also been with the city over 10 years, and he does the same thing that Patricia does, when he helps with the programs during the whole year, and then in the summertime, when Jeff's down at the ball fields, he kind of runs the Mill Avenue Gym for us. And our last person is a new addition to our staff. She's been with us since about January, named Georgia Spence. She's been with the city for a number of years, but she's our administrative assistants in Parks and Recreation now, and she is a great asset to us and a great member of our staff, and we're so happy to have her on board. The next slide that you see gives you a listing of the Parks and Recreation Facility where there's activities. I'm not going to go over all of those, but I'll just mention a few of them. As I said earlier, Bridge Street and Mill Avenue and Freedom Park and the Garden of Eden Center, those are really the four major facilities where mostly the activity takes place. We have a lot of other buildings and playgrounds and parks where we, where a lot of unorganized activity takes place, like at the playgrounds, practices, and things like that. And then we also have the Greenway, the Draper Landing, the Smith River, uh, Lixwell Landing, and the Island Four Landing where the river access lights are. So a lot of places for the city's citizens to get out and enjoy, and also a great number of facilities where we're able to break people in for terms of things that help provide a positive economic impact on our program.
Johnny, how they can do your layout with 17 places? People don't realize how many places we have in Eden that you can go.
It is.
And walk down to here, well, it's no place to go, and then it's a little town. But if you look, there's 17 different parks and things that you guys take care of, places where people go.
It is, and you know the thing about it, there's, on any given day, if you go to one of those facilities, somebody's going to be there, maybe, may only be a handful of people, but somebody normally uses all these facilities on a regular basis. The next slide that I'm going to go to is Freedom Park, and this is really the hub of our activity, and, uh, and this is for the calendar year 2013. It's from January 1 to December 31st. And in 2013, we have 51 events scheduled down at Freedom Park. Some of those events did not take place because of the weather or something like that, but there was 51 events scheduled. We have 41 baseball and softball tournaments scheduled. We had eight concerts in the park. We had two citywide festivals, which includes Rip Fest and the Monster Mash. And then we also hosted North Carolina Dixie Youth Baseball Tournament 2013, and that tournament alone had probably an economic impact on the city of Eden of around anywhere between $350,000 and $500,000, because we had teams here for about seven days. They stayed in hotels, and not only teams with parents and coaches were there, they visited the restaurants and all the other, other, uh, business establishments in town, such as Walmart and things like that. So we were very fortunate to get that, and I know we're talking about 2013, but I'm happy to say that we also have a Dixie Youth Baseball State Tournament in 2014. We'll be hosting the AAA tournament. This is the nine to 10-year-old children, and there'll be 16 teams from across the state, and only two of them will be here from Rockland County. The rest of the team, 12, the rest of the 14 teams will be staying in hotels, and this tournament, 2014, probably have about a $700,000 economic impact on the city during that time here, or maybe even greater. I try to be real conservative in the numbers that I give you.
Johnny, I'd like to point out, too, 51 weekend events. I mean, you guys are there almost every weekend all year, somebody's involved.
Well, some of those weekends, when I, when I say 51 weekend events, it's not 51, so it may be more than one weekend, more than one available weekend. Normally, there's about 40 weeks that we actually have tournaments down there, and then there may be a concert in the park scheduled at the same time as well as one of the special events.
My point is, whether it's 40 or it's 51, you've got a long staff that's working a lot of weekends, doing a lot of hours.
Staff is there every weekend. And speaking of that, Freedom Park, really from the mid part of April through the end of November, staff is down there Monday through, Monday through Sunday normally, because of the weekend tournaments at. You know, that's where it's at, Paul, that, you know, it's not only be used by our citizens for quality programs and facilities, but we also use it as that economic tool to bring in those outside tournaments for people not from the city to spend those extra dollars. The next slide is a list of some of the programs that we do here in the city of Eden, and I'm not going to list all those, and it's your typical sports-related programs in baseball, softball, and football for you. We do softball, baseball, things for the adults. We do volleyball. Volleyball is probably the biggest adult sport that we have right now. It has grown to where we have, and we do do the volleyball leagues now, especially our co-ed leagues, we have anywhere from 10 to about 16 teams, and during the fall, we do volleyball in the fall, and winter, and spring, and we play volleyball about four nights a week down at Draper, beginning at six, and they're down there around 10 o'clock each night. But a host of activities that we do at the Parks and Recreation Facility, and these activities take place all across the city. The next slide is a listing of our programs and activities that's offered at the Garden of Eden Center, and that location is 508 Orto Drive, and we try to do a little bit of everything to keep these seniors busy, and the main thing that we try to provide for our seniors is that socialization. That is the key element in making sure that our seniors live a quality life, is to keep them involved in something and making sure that they're interacting with each other. And as you can see, you see a lot of different things. We take them on trips, and one of the things that we really push is our senior games, and this is a charity collaborative effort with all municipalities in Rockland County, where we do senior games, and then the winners of those games advance to the state tournament.
Johnny, was considered a senior?
Well, it used to be. It used to be 55, but this year, they changed it down to 50. So you're 50 years of age or older, then you can participate in the senior game.
You qualify, Mr. Mayor. Did you sign up for a crocheting class?
We can do that for all of them. And with the senior games, it's just not sports-related things. They do, they do all type of interpretive arts, they do dance, they do poetry, they do all different type things to give everybody an opportunity to be active. The next slide, which I want to show you, is, to me, is very important. What we try to do is we try to track visits. We can't track people, but we try to track visits, and what I do, staff gives me a weekly report with the people, and their estimates of the number of visits that they place at different facilities. And you see a listing here, I'm not going to mention all of them, but I will mention Freedom Park. In 2013, we had approximately 329,000 visits. Could have been the same people going 10 times a month or something, but that's really how you have to track it, because every time someone goes there, someone has to make sure that the facility's in good shape and in a safe environment for people to use. So that's just a lot for Freedom Park. But overall, in Parks and Recreation, we have about 628,000 visits to those 17 facilities that were listed earlier, and that averages out to about 12,000 visits a week. So you can imagine that that's a lot of visits that we commit to, and when you realize it, there's only eight full-time staff members in the Parks and Recreation Department. So the reason we're able to really accommodate this number of visits is because of the volunteers that we have. I mean, just with the haunted trail, they've been doing that for about six years now. We have hundreds of people that volunteer for that haunted trail, and they normally generate about $8,000 or $9,000 a year that comes right back to the city of Eden to help us provide youth programs to our children at no cost. We're the only city in the state of North Carolina, and maybe the country, but I know we're the only city in the state of North Carolina that does not charge our youth to participate. And to me, that not only says something great about our mayor and council and what the city does, but that also helps to decrease the criminal element in our community. And the reason I say that is that we're keeping our children busy, we're giving them that opportunity to get out there and be around positive role models, and it really, really makes a difference. So, uh, so again, and in closing, I just want to say that the Parks and Recreation Department staff is just very, very happy to be able to play a role in helping enhance the quality of life for the citizens here in the city of Eden. and has the quality of life for the citizens here in, in the City of Eden, and, uh, sometimes it's the little things that you do that, that means a lot, means a lot, and, and, uh, I did a lot, not here in Eden, but when, when I, when I used to be like an athletic director or recreation center supervisor, and Tank will tell you, Jeff will tell you, and Terry Vernon will tell you, the best thing that you can have someone do is come and say, Terry, I remember what you did for me when I was, uh, ten years old. You helped get me out of trouble, or, or Tank, thank you for all those things that, that you did, did for me. And those are the things that, that make, uh, the City of Eden a great place to work, a great place to live, a great place to play, is because we want to make a difference in the lives of our citizens, and, uh, we just want to thank you for allowing us to, to have the opportunity to do that for our citizens. Is that funny? What, uh, again, we go back to this question. I think this is fantastic. I guess that's, I found it, I'm not sure, but, uh, the, the numbers are fantastic for this question. How do you track, how do you track that? Well, what we do is, uh, my supervisors, that, that they turn in, I turn a weekly report to the city manager each, um, each week, and on, on that weekly report is a number of folks that may have visited, that they estimate visited Bridge Street or Freedom Park, and then what I did is I went and tagged them, the fifty-two weeks from January one to December thirty first, and come up with those numbers. So, so they're, they're tracking each week? We, we get it each week, yes, sir. It's something that we do each week, it's great. And, and we, and we've been doing that, I think it's been, it had been done prior to the coming, we've been turning those reports a bit earlier, and I think what I try to do is, is try to put those numbers, if you're tracking something, you know, the data is, it's got to be useful for something, and I think when, when we're trying to let folks know what we're actually doing, the data really can, can back up all the great things that, that's happening in the city. Yeah, you look at the, the Freedom Park number there, just imagine that where it looked before Freedom Park, and now with Freedom Park there, the, the additional three hundred and twenty-nine thousand participation visits that are going up there, so I think that shows there is a lot going on. Be interesting to find out too, if you track that over a period of, say, eight or ten years, what's that participation actually doing? Well, I've got it for, for the last nine years, so, uh, it's probably technical with everybody. I, I would just bet, I would just bet that it probably has increased over the years. Well, from, from the last time that I did the numbers, Freedom, the last time I really looked at the numbers was like two thousand eight, uh, when I did the numbers, but, uh, Freedom Park was up about a hundred thousand from, from two thousand eight, and, and that's due to really pushing the tournaments, because when we first started it, we were only getting a handful of tournaments, but, and what's happened now is we're likely to get the tournaments that we get, because what's happened, everybody in the state are building these type complexes because they seen the, uh, the, uh, the great things that these kind of places do by bringing people to your community and, and having that positive, uh, economic impact over the weekend and things for your community.
As you said, it's all the more reason that we need to stay abreast of having new facilities and having new places to bring more people to town and economic development. I mean, it's obvious what, uh, Freedom Park has done, but I think we do have some old and outdated facilities that maybe we need to update and do some things or consolidate, especially our seniors and young people, plus the river state bylaw, and river state propensity with other communities. And we need to stay ahead, is what I wanted to say.
What's happened in most communities, they're building larger indoor complexes to kind of centralize everything so that you got everything in one large, uh, area, so that you can make sure that you got your staffing, you don't have to really always hire official staffing, you've got a large facility, but, but one of the things that, that businesses look at when they come to town, and Mr. Guy, we've probably been backing up on this, is they look at the type of investment that, that the town is really making in their community for their citizens and the people coming there. And these recreation facilities, uh, the new facilities, they provide your programs for your seniors, they pro- provide programs for your health and wellness, they pro- program for your basketball, your sports-related things, so it's really a community hub where, where there is a central gathering place where everybody can come together and you can do everything there. And those are the type of facilities that, that you see are being developed, and I mean, it's just not in, in North Carolina, but all across the country, that's what they're building. They're building thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollar, thirty, forty, fifty thousand square feet indoor facilities, so that they can house everything in wood areas, so, and that helps us down on the cost. Uh, and, and they still keep those satellite facilities to meet the needs in the neighborhood, but when you do that, you don't have to program eight or ten hours a day at the satellite facilities. You program just when there needs to be a program there, like an after-school program or something like that.
If we ever did build a facility or discussed building a facility, don't you think it, it would certainly be an economic incentive for businesses to come here if we had to, if we knew that we tried to make these facilities deal with every part of the community as well as the business community or, or industries, because they have these, they have days that need, uh, upgrades, you know, with management, with, uh, workshops, those type of things, and they would use our facilities.
I think so.
And do that in a lot of places as well.
They do that, and, and we have folks utilizing our, our facilities now for those type of things. I know, you know, Dan comes in, uh, multiple persons have come in that use like the evil room or, or the conference room, but a lot of times when, when they want to use it, it may be looked by someone else. So, so we, if you have a facility where you have additional space and things like that, it would be a good, we could be a good neighbor to our corporate folks to, to move out of location, and they could come and do that, and, and you could do like little meeting conferences and things like that, that bring in different type of, of venues for, for your, for your benefit.
Well, that was a great point, sir, and we appreciate that, and I think we learned even more than what we already knew about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Item three of consent agenda. There's no objection, we will adopt a motion by the unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda. If there's no, no objection, the motion to adopt the consent agenda is approved. Item thirteen, you can announce what's in, like, the council.
I'd like to thank everybody for all the garbage and snow. Our city crews were just incredible. I know I had requests from merchants downtown, and there's need for that very quickly, considering it's Valentine's Day, and the merchants need to be open, so I really appreciate that on everybody's behalf. I had probably tons of people work twenty-four hours there for several days, but thanks.
I do know some people that complained about the garbage not being picked up because of snow, but what people don't realize, a lot of these guys that, that doing one thing, uh, they're, they're removing snow, then on Saturdays, they're picking up the garbage. So they were doing double duty, and also they were working forty-eight hours.
And our side down had a fryer, um, pick up for garbage, and it was picked up yesterday, which I thought was still amazing, and they also allowed for extra garbage, and they had picked up curbside garbage among the cans. So that was really well done and well coordinated, if you will.
Any other community members?
I would like to say, uh, good luck to the wrestling championship, uh, after having, what, eleven out of fourteen wrestlers competing in the state championship in the Moorean High School. It's really a big plus for our area here. Last weekend, that came regional, uh, champions also, best of luck to the wrestlers. And then you, your first-year coach, Dan Bright.
It's not bad for first year. Item fourteen, adjournment. If there's no objection, we will adopt a motion by the unanimous consent to adjourn. There's no objection, so the motion to adjourn is approved.